To call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The fire evacuation announcement. In the event of a fire, there are exits in the back of the chambers and to my left and the audience is right, you exit through the doors, go downstairs and into the parking lot. Roll call.
Andrew Obanowitz.
Here.
Mary Ann Turner, here. Kelly Davis.
Here.
Charlie Mastaburdi. Tim Neville.
Here.
Rich Stroney.
Here.
Robert Kwasnicki.
Here.
Kathryn Plopper.
So we have seven members present.
Yes.
Seven members present, one absent. First order of business is the election of chairman. Do I have a nomination?
I nominate Andrew Obanowitz.
And do I have a second?
A second.
Mr. Krasnicki, are there any other nominations? Do I have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second, Tim Neville. All in favor of closing nominations? Raise your hand. In favor? And against, any abstentions? Okay. Okay, roll call.
Andrew Obanowitz.
Abstained.
Mary Ann Turner, Andrew Obanowitz. Kelly Davis.
Andrew.
Tim Neville.
Andrew Obanowitz.
Rich Stroney.
Andrew Obanowitz.
Robert Kwasnicki.
Andrew Obanowitz.
Kathy Plopper.
Andrew Obanowitz.
Six yeses, one abstention, one absent.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Andrew.
Thank you.
Good. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice work, Bob.
Thank you. My job is done. Have a wonderful meeting, everyone. And, okay.
Thank you.
See ya.
Slide over. So continuing on with the election of officers, do we have a nomination for vice chair?
I would like to nominate Tim Neville for vice chair.
All second.
All those in favor.
All those in favor.
Close nominations first.
All those in favor of closing nominations?
So moved. Second. Okay.
Roll call.
Andrew Obanowitz.
Tim Neville.
Mary Ann Turner. Tim Neville. Kelly Davis.
Tim Neville.
Charlie Mastaburdi's absent. Tim Neville.
Tim Neville.
Rich Stroney.
Tim Neville.
Rob Kwasnicki.
Tim Neville.
Kathy Plopper.
Tim Neville.
Six, seven, all yes for Tim Neville.
And now we'll move on to secretary. Do we have a nomination for secretary?
Mary Ann Turner.
Second.
Second.
These are nominations.
Motion to close nomination.
Motion to close nomination.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion or ready for roll call? Roll call.
Andrew Obanowitz.
Mary Ann Turner.
Mary Ann Turner. Mary Ann Turner. Kelly Davis.
Mary Ann Turner.
Tim Neville.
Mary Ann Turner.
Rich Stroney.
Mary Ann Turner.
Rob Kwasnicki.
Mary Ann Turner.
Kathleen Plopper.
Mary Ann Turner.
Seven yes, and Charlie Mastaburdi's on his way. Want to do fire evacuation or did he do that already?
I don't know if he did that.
Yes.
Okay. So are we on to the town attorney's report? I don't think we had one.
Just what he sent.
Just a memo with some docket entries. Same as, I think, pretty much what we've seen.
Are we going to actually be told what's going on with these or are we just being told they're still in process?
Typically, you're just given the update. So until something happens, that's where it's at, is it's in process.
Everybody good with that? Moving on to old business.
You'll need to seat a member since Charlie's not here.
Correct. Who did we seat last for alternate?
I think we had Kathleen.
Okay.
So it'd either be Rich or Kwasnicki or Tim. I don't know if that... When did you guys last seat?
I wasn't here last meeting.
I don't think Rich has been seated in quite a while.
I don't think he's been seated in a bit.
Okay, well, we'll seat Rich tonight.
For this one.
For this, yes, for this public hearing.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please read the legal notice.
ZBA 2021-11-30, 1658 King Street, variance application of Section 510 of the zoning regulations to allow reduction of the required front yard setback at 1658 King Street. Scott, I don't remember how to pronounce Scott's last name, Tri-State Rentals LLC owner, Tom Parker, the Yardhouse Yard Tavern applicant, map 13, lot 36, HR 33 zone. Is the applicant here?
Yeah. Please come forward. I'm just going to read in for the record that a variance can be granted where such grant will not affect the overall purpose of the zoning ordinance and where strict interpretation of the ordinance will result in a hardship. A hardship exists where the zoning ordinance uniquely affects a parcel of land differently from other properties and where use of the property, reasonable use of the land, would be impossible without the variance. Self-imposed or financial hardships by law cannot be considered as a reason for granting a variance. You have the floor.
Okay. Well, our whole purpose of this is with COVID, nobody wants to wait inside. And it's gotten to be, you know, everyone's eating outside. You've granted us a nice fake huge patio, but we're busy and people are just waiting in the parking lot. And last year, someone almost got hit by a car. Two people sitting on the curb, and I couldn't take it anymore. I saw it a number of times. So we had this little idea to take an island that's not being used anything but for an island, and we put a deck up where we were going to have people be able to sit, be safe, not have to worry, get called in, come in, have dinner, be done. Nobody's sitting out in the parking lot with the risk of injury.
Questions of the commission?
I went over and looked at it, and actually, what you did was, in my opinion, is a safety hazard. You're so close, you can't put the concrete buttresses. I'm sure I'm using the wrong word.
We have bollards. We didn't finish because you told us to stop. So we were going to put bollards around the perimeter of the deck to protect it so cars couldn't hit it and nobody could get there.
But then you're going to skinny up the driveway unless you plan on having people no longer pass in front of those two decks because there's a driveway, then your two decks, then another driveway, and a parking lot.
No, where the deck is, ma'am, is built on an island that was...
Right.
It was, it's not changing the traffic flow or people coming in at all.
Right. But if you were to put, you add anything there, you're going to skinny that driveway up that goes in front of those decks. And really and truly, that's one of the concerns, a safety issue when I looked at it and I'd been out there.
Uh huh.
And also, I don't believe that I could tell, that I don't believe that planning and zoning gave you the go to put a second deck.
They didn't give me any, ma'am, I'm going to be as honest as can be. I've come to these meetings, not to yours, the other, to get things done. And it took me three and a half years to build a parking lot. Took me four and a half years to build a patio. I got stopped. I had zoning people come and tell me they're going to shut my restaurant down because I'm not doing things properly. I built the parking lot, got approval, you guys signed it off. And because I didn't build my first patio, my first parking lot, because the state wouldn't allow it, I'm getting these notices to say you have to close. So I had it. So before someone got hurt, I put up these two little decks to let people sit on and make sure they were safe. And no, I didn't go to zoning, and no, I didn't even ask for permission. I just did it. So shame on me. But by the time I got permission, it would have been three more years, and I couldn't take it anymore.
I have to be honest with you. I watch the stuff that's going on, planning and zoning, and they are moving, the commissioners themselves are moving quite quickly.
Yep.
If you're having issues with the office, then you need to bring it to the town council and talk to them about that.
Ma'am, I was in the middle of you going through people getting fired. I had everything approved and done, but because everybody, something happened internally, had to start all over again. I sat in this seat and said what I was going to say, and then it's like, nope, you can't start. You have to start the whole process all over again because of internal strife in the town of Enfield. So if you look back and see when I started with Jose and we worked our way along and then having people come and tell me they're going to close me down, I took it upon myself. Shame on me. But I took it upon myself to do what I thought was right. So we built it. We built it properly. We built it with safety in mind, and we built it with a purpose, to try to make sure nobody got hurt.
Mr. Parker, as our chairman has reiterated earlier, we're a zoning board of appeals. We have a very narrow focus, and it's only about a variance that fits within the regulations that you're in front of us. If there's an issue that you need to bring back to planning and zoning for something that you want, you have to bring it to them.
No, we did. I started with them, and they told me this is where I have to come because I'm three feet within... My whole thing is because of the right-of-way with the state owns part of our property for Route 5, so we're three feet short of whatever the variance is supposed to be. So I'm still on our own property. Everything is done on our property, but we don't have that 25 feet. We have 35 feet from the curb, but because the right-of-way comes back into our property, we're not in compliant that way.
Were there other places on site that you could have located this deck? Could you have made it conform?
I'll be honest, I really not, I really didn't look that far. I didn't look that hard. I could have maybe put it out back.
Is it possible, why couldn't you just, you have the road, your parking, you have your parking, then you have a sidewalk, and then you have the area next to the building where you have plantings. I know that in your, when you put your building up or when you renovated it, I'm sure the planning and zoning said you had to have so many plantings, but maybe it would have been better to just put chairs or benches or something along the edge of the building versus building this deck that's really in your parking lot.
I mean, I took, I didn't take any, I didn't take any parking spaces away, and I didn't change anything that would change the flow of traffic. I took a spot that, we built it around a tree. There's a tree in the middle of it. We built it around so we didn't hurt the tree. And we made it so that it's just an easy, I can put some chairs out there, people can sit and wait, and we can call them, they come in and have dinner. That's the whole purpose. So for zoning-wise, I'm on our own property. I'm just not that 25 feet from the front of the road.
Right. And I'm, from my perspective, it's not just you being short to the street. You are in your parking lot, in the road.
But I'm not.
That, it used to have curb and inside it was mulch, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But that was one piece. You built two decks.
I built it all on that. I had to build it in tiers because the way the tree was there and everything is there, we had to do it in two tiers.
So you did it all, that's not two decks that were built at separate times?
It's one deck, all the same time.
It was one gigantic deck that you built?
Yeah, all one time.
Okay.
This chart shows...
I think the...
Thank you. This chart shows the building of the deck right on top of the island that was there.
Yes.
And you might have extended it a bit further, is what you're saying?
We're probably, I think we measured it to be exact, we're about nine inches off the curb.
Okay.
But we're still on our property. When they did the site survey and the whole thing, we're on tri-states, we're still on our own land.
Okay. So the island was essentially that large?
Yes.
Okay.
It was an L...
It's tough to see with the deck there.
The island was L-shaped, so it came over, it came across, and then it came back toward the building.
I think Commissioner Noble has a question.
Yeah, I would not have visited today. I also rode by on Sunday.
Tim, would you turn?
I was down, excuse me, I was down there visiting today. Rode by there, kind of pulled in and circled around. Correct me if I'm wrong, I thought you were finished. You're telling me that you haven't finished it.
He stopped because...
I didn't know that.
Yeah, Tim, they came to us and they said, someone said you're building a deck. I said, yep. And it was the town, I believe, the engineer, which whomever, and started the process. I said, I'll stop. Tell me what I need to do. He took a look around. If we go forward, I know what I need to do to make it 100% compliant with his guidelines. I know what I have to finish. Like, we never finished putting anything around it. We never put railings up. We didn't finish a railing to get up the stairs. We didn't finish a ladder. We stopped. Soon as you said stop, we stopped.
Okay. I noticed that, that the railing wasn't there.
No, there's no rail. There's nothing. We had rope around it just so nobody went up on it.
Okay. The other thing is I noticed that somebody has knocked down one of the posts there. It's right cut off.
They sure did, because there's nothing to protect it.
Okay.
Someone hit it on.
Is your intent to do something more?
Yeah, we were saying we're going to put some bollards in the corner.
Okay. Okay. I just, just looking at it today, just, nothing in here that said it wasn't finished yet.
No, it's not, not at all. We stopped when we were told to stop.
The other question I have has to do with, one of your reasons for doing this in the first place is that people were uncomfortable. The first thing that went through my mind, I mean, I've gone to the patio several times. I've never had to wait in line, but I also go like mid-afternoon or something like that. But has it been a problem since the patio was put in that you've had people kind of waiting in line, being uncomfortable, or is it just a new thing based on the pandemic?
Oh, it's totally COVID. Nobody wants to wait inside. Everyone's still, especially in the summertime, everyone still wanted to be outside. I could be full, we could have seats inside, and people still would wait to sit outside.
Speaking of that, do you have seats inside for people to wait? Is there a waiting area?
No, there's no, there's no real room for anyone to wait.
I didn't think so, because, you know, when I've been in, I don't remember it anyway.
You know, it's sort of the whole thing that's changed because the government has granted us, you can get a drink, get your drinks, and then go wait outside. That's the new law.
Really?
So people are comfortable with going to get a drink and going, you know, before, they would go sit in their car and we would buzz them. Now they can, they'll sit out on the corner, they'll sit everywhere. On a Friday or Saturday night, there's people sitting everywhere.
Just in terms of logistics, I'll pull this down a little bit. Just in terms of logistics there, when people walk in, they sign with your receptionist there and say they want a table out on the patio. Do you just take their name down? Do you give them a buzzer?
We have a computer, so iPad, you key in, and then you get, we take your phone number, and then we, one, two, three, four.
You call like yourself.
Your table's ready. Yep.
Okay.
And you can, on that, we can say you want to sit inside, you want to sit outside, whatever you want to.
Is this 12 months a year, or is it just for the springtime, summertime?
Oh, no. I mean, the patio hasn't been open for...
No, I know. I'm just asking.
No, no, we would never, no.
Oh.
I mean, there'd be no reason to sit out there now. I mean, people sit in their cars. I can't do anything about that. I'm trying to, summertime, because the patio is so busy and there's people just everywhere, you know, is it a good answer? Maybe we put it along here? I don't know. I have to figure that one out. I could put it along the building. I just don't want people wandering in the parking lot. It just, it's an accident ready to happen, and I don't want to be that person responsible for it.
I think also, kind of picking up on Commissioner Turner's, that the issue of getting it through channels with the town, is that something you're still in the process of going to do, or what, how's it work?
Oh, yeah. I just, when I was told, you know, when the town came to me and said, did you get permission? I said, no. I didn't hide it. I said, I wasn't hiding what I was building. This is what I'm doing. I spoke to the gentleman and told him what I was doing. He was like, I looked at it, you're doing the right thing. We did, I had a professional person build it so that it's to code, and it just needs to be finished. But I haven't got to that point because I have to get through you to say you grant me my variance from the road, and then I'll have to start the process with the town, with the engineers, and whichever, to have it built properly so it fits the code.
Other questions of the commission?
Yes, hi. Just, so you noticed that your customers were wanting to wait outside on their own, by their own accord, right?
Yeah.
And by law, you can't stop them from doing that, correct? Has the liability shifted on your customers, or do you still have liability if they get hurt?
Oh, it's still 100. They're on my property. I'm hurt.
Even though they decide they don't want to wait inside?
Nope.
Even if the governor allows them to walk outside with drinks?
Yep.
That liability falls on you.
They can drive away now with drinks, and I'm still liable.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions of the commission?
One question. In terms of those additional 10 feet that are causing the issue here, was there a way to move that deck closer to the building, to the other deck? I know you have a walkway ramp there, but incorporating that?
Then I did, we looked at, we really did look at it, and we said, how do we get people, especially in the wintertime? Now you're going to make them walk through the parking lot again to go around the island to get to the other side. If I made it, I mean, here's the $100 question. If it goes forward and the governor keeps doing these mandates to allow us to do things, I'm going to come to the town and say, how do I build a parking lot? How do I build a deck in my parking lot to be safe for everybody, not in the middle of a parking lot? Then we can do exactly what you said. We can make that the parking space that's right there. It still would be seven feet into the, into the, into the right-of-way, but there's a parking space there and we could go forward. We looked at that. We really looked at it to say, but we're not going to do something, we're not going to build this huge thing until we know we can do that. So this was just kind of a, I started this in July, and here we are in January. It's, I thought I was doing something for a quick fix.
Sure.
And it backfired, so.
Okay. And just a question, a clarification. The island itself was fine inside that setback, but once he built it up, that's...
That...
Not a factor.
Remember, right.
Okay.
Planning and zoning puts that, is there a part of their conditions on how they would set up that parking lot?
Right, it's part of the site.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but I have plenty of, what's the word, dirt to pavement, I'm way, because Scott put two parts of the land together, so we have, when we built the big parking lot on the south, we had to move stuff around, so we have plenty of, I don't even know, there's a word for it. We have plenty.
Just to clarify, my question was more about, once it became a deck, it became in violation of the originally approved?
Remember why you're here.
Mm-hmm.
It's 35 feet.
Right.
Okay? It has nothing to do with the deck itself. Why, what is the hardship?
Sure.
Other questions of the commission, Tim?
I'm still having some issues with the hardship, okay? I understand what you're telling us, okay? But it seems to me, and I could be wrong, that it's a temporary hardship. I'm hopeful that the pandemic's going to get, taking away people, get healed, and we won't have any more of that stuff. We all are. But if it didn't happen back in 2012, 2012, when you guys put the patio in, it wasn't a hardship then, my question is, is it a temporary hardship that may very well take care of itself?
I think, sir, that, I think outdoor dining is here to stay.
Oh, I agree with you on that.
And that's why we looked at it that way. And like I say, we have that thought in our mind to say, how do we, how do we expand? And we're not here for that part, but I need to make a bigger patio so people will go outside, you know? I need a patio like Wouldn't Happ has, all these people, you're granted, you know, they built in front of Chicago Seance, they have a patio in their parking lot.
It's supposed to be spaced six feet apart.
You know, you know what I mean? So it's a...
How are you supposed to do that?
It's...
Please, to the audience.
It's, so is it a long, a long term, as you're asking me? I think it's something that's, I don't know if the governor's going to say you can't. I can't see him taking the drinking part away because everyone's surviving on it. People are making, that's how they're doing, they're to go. You're enticing, I'm enticing you to go by having lunch and you can get two beers to go. I don't think that's, I don't have the answer, so I can't give you that. You know what I mean? I really can't give you an honest answer.
I don't expect that kind of answer. I guess the issue is we've got kind of a mess here. We're kind of putting the cart before the horse is what bothers me. And that you're here looking for a variance with 35 feet, okay? And if, correct me if I'm wrong, that variance goes with the land, it's forever.
Correct.
Okay? And so you may come up hypothetically, you know, two years from now and say, yeah, I got to build a bigger deck somewhere. And this may not even fit in with those plans. And no matter what you do, you still have to go back to planning and zoning.
Right.
And, you know, and before, in my mind, just me, before you get a variance to do this, you need to get clearance there and get it, get it built.
Oh, I know. I can't do anything until I'm done here.
This mess has to get taken...
Right. Without it, we tried to, I tried to put a pavilion on the north side, and I was, can't do it. So it just, I'm, like you say, I just tried to do something in my mind that was just for the safety of the people that come to the restaurant. That's all.
So Mr. Parker, so are you implying to me that when the COVID disappears, that you'll want to have these decks become part of your patio?
Oh, I would, I'm not going to lie. I would say that that would be, for people to wait, that's the perfect spot for people to wait all the time. Even when COVID's gone, hopefully in a year or two. People are going to still dine outside if people want to wait. I don't, I foresee, everything I've read and all the material I get from national restaurants, it's just, even in Florida where it's, they're building decks bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger, outside dining is in. and bigger, outside dining is in. In the middle of it all last year, ma'am, we were full outside and maybe 25% full inside. Nobody wanted to be inside. And not because it was summertime. We've gone through that years and years and years. People want to eat. But now people are afraid to go inside. They want to be outside.
This is a variance that goes with the property forever, and we have to stay within the regulations that are in front of us. We're a very narrow board. The only one who can make any changes to what you can and cannot do would be planning and zoning. And I'm pretty sure that the office has talked to them. And I know you've been in front of them. But please understand, we have to go by the regulations that are in front of us, and 35 feet is the minimum.
So I'm confused because I started with planning and zoning, and that's where everything was, and that's where all our.
And the thing with planning and zoning, got your deck added, and your parking lot was done? There was, there were, you did do things over there. Planning and zoning was.
Right. But I'm saying for this, I, why I'm here with you right now is they steered me in the direction to say, these are all the things you have to do.
But wasn't this a cease and desist?
This was a notice of violation that was initially. So he's before you to try to satisfy that notice of violation. If he didn't come here, then the next step would have been a cease and desist order and maybe ultimately here before you to hear the cease and desist. But in lieu of that, he applied, because the First Avenue, he can't go to P&amp;Z for it at this point in time. He would have to get the variance if that was the case. So that's why he's here with the variance before you now.
Thank you. Commissioner Neville.
He can't go to P&amp;Z for this? Or if he's looking to do a deck or looking to do another patio or do whatever to deal with his perceived need that people want to eat outside?
He has to get a variance first, Tim.
He has to get the variance first.
Because he's in violation of the zoning rules.
No, fine, okay.
Okay?
That's my question.
Yep.
Thank you.
What it says, there's only 35 feet, and he wants it to be brought down to two and a half feet? Or he wants two and a half feet? I would like to hear what the staff has to say, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Could staff clarify that question for us? What is being requested?
The request is for, according to the site plan, one and a half feet from the property boundary, from the front line.
Okay.
The application states two and a half, but on the actual site plan, it's one and a half feet is called out for the existing deck.
So are you trying to tell me that it'll be 34 or 33 and a half feet?
Yes, it would be 33 and a half feet, yeah.
Does that include the bollards that you're talking about putting out there?
No.
That doesn't include that? So that's jutting it further out?
Right. So that the bollards are about 12 inches. Yeah.
It's still.
Is there anything else? So the commission, before we open it up to the public? Seeing no questions. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor? Anyone in the audience to speak against? Do we have anybody on this side?
I feel like he's trying to keep people safe and go outside, you know? Trying to keep the six feet, trying to break people up.
He's talking, he can't speak from there.
Right. Can you come up here and say your name in for the record?
Mr. Parker, he has to take your seat.
Yep.
All right. So my name is Charles Harris, and.
And your address, sir?
It's Jackson Road 253. I.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I feel like this man is trying to keep people safe, keep them socially distanced, trying to, and why that's being prohibited. I, I mean, I don't know. I don't get it. I don't know if it's a federal level or a state level or what it is, but this guy's building a deck to get people outside away from his, you know, away from his bar, people separated. And I feel like it's kind of ridiculous that you're trying to prevent that, but.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience to speak in favor? Anyone else in the audience to speak against? Does the applicant have any? Oh, okay, yeah, I was looking for that. Does the applicant wish to come back up for any rebuttal?
I gave my case, I'm hoping it's up to you.
Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I was just wondering if the applicant, the ZBA did ask him whether or not he had considered any alternative locations? And I'm wondering if you truly exhausted that opportunity?
Yes, that was just the perfect spot. It didn't really hinder too much.
Yeah. So, I mean, the concern in my thought is that you are going to encroach onto the state right of way with your bollards. And that can't happen. We can't allow anything to go into the state right of way, which is your property line. So I was just thinking, maybe he could come modify it or find a different location. So just something to think about. But he is here to try to remedy the, as a corrective action to, so he could move forward to planning and zoning.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor. Want to take a roll call on that?
To close the public hearing?
The public hearing, yeah.
Do you need to do a roll call just for closing it?
Yep. Andrew Obanowicz?
Yes.
Mary Ann Turner, yes. Kelly Davis?
Yes.
Tim Neville?
Yes.
Rich Strohny?
Yes.
Okay, the hearing is now closed. Discussion.
There's a safety problem here. There's a safety problem. Even if you used to put the bales up, there is a driveway there, and these two. What?
I agree with you on the safety.
Right.
Very hard to get around.
And I'm concerned, there's, you have the parking, you have the entranceway down here with the parking lot. You have the front of the building. There's then more parking spaces than these two new decks, which then puts the driveway and another entranceway to another bigger parking lot. I think there are opportunities for a seating place, but not here. And I just think it's a safety problem. And I do agree with the planner. We cannot put you in the state's right of way.
Tim?
I agree with Commissioner Turner. I just, I understand what you're saying, but the solutions that are here within the regulations just aren't something that we can deal with. And we can't put anything in the right of way. We just can't. And the safety issue is the biggest one. I'm just concerned that, I'll ask a question, and listening to what you said, Lori.
We're in discussions, so we can't ask questions.
Okay. I'm just wondering then, if there's another alternative here that, you know, that can be explored somewhere to deal with this. I agree with Commissioner Turner that this is not something that's going to work in its current form. And it's still a safety problem, no matter what you do. And if you add the things that we were, suggested that we're going to add to surround the deck, that would make it worse. Boom. It would be pushing it out into the state's right of way there. So I just wish there was another solution. But based on what we have to deal with right now, still a safety issue.
I would say that I have a hard time finding the hardship in this. There are other opportunities on the site. It's a large enough site. It could be moved to be in conformity with the setbacks. And I think that, right now, to say that it is a hardship, it would be a self-imposed hardship. And that's my feeling on it.
I agree. I think there's other places that the waiting area can go. And the safety issue is huge. It's, you know, you go in right at the driveway right there. Safety is a huge factor.
Any further discussion?
Before we move on.
Yes.
Lori, I didn't receive my notice, my, the paperwork I need to fill out tonight.
The vote sheet.
The vote sheet. They're not here on my desk, and they didn't come to me in my mail.
I have to give you a list of numbers?
No, I have that.
Usually, usually we have a document that has a pro forma motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve ZBA 2021 1130 for a variance of Section 510 to allow reduction of the required front yard setback at 1658 King Street. Tri-State Rentals LLC owner Tom Parker, the Yard Tavern, applicant NAP 13, Lot 36 BL Zone. For our new members, please understand we have to always give our motions in the affirmative, okay?
Do we have a second on the floor?
Second.
Second, and by Kelly? Roll call vote?
Andrew Obanowicz?
No.
Mary Ann Turner, no. Kelly Davis?
No.
Tim Neville?
No.
Rich Strohny?
No.
50005, 500, whichever, which way is no.
Yeah, zero.
Thank you. 005. Okay.
I have a question.
Sir, the hearing's closed.
Ben, I need the form so that we can, so in the future, I need to be able to fill out who made the motion, who made the second. And then I need to give our reasons on why we voted how we voted. And I don't have that document. And it's really important that I have that. How do you want to proceed, Mr. Chairman? You want to make something up here on a piece of paper?
Yeah, I guess, or we could, we could read it into the record. If you have a piece of paper, it'd probably be better.
Okay.
Then we can at least collect signatures.
Okay. Kelly, you made the second, right?
Yes, she did.
And I think I read something. Did I just throw it all out? We'll do a little cut and paste here.
Okay. I don't think I have any tape in my.
That's all right, we'll use.
I've got a straight edge if you need to tear.
Slip my throat. Paperclips.
There we go.
Use paperclips. That's the motion.
Yep.
And our reasons for denial?
That we found it to be a self-imposed hardship and other opportunities, other opportunities were available on site to accommodate the project and not need the variance.
Yep. So self-imposed hardship, other opportunities available, safety issue. Do we kind of cover them with that?
I think that's it.
Okay. You guys have to kind of sign over here. So we're going to have this for, against. And I'm going to be over here as Mary Ann. And you're going to go ahead of me up there.
Okay, I got my pen. All right.
And then Kelly. And then Rich. And then we'll buzz it back down to Tim.
Rich's signature.
Tim, could you sign down there?
Hope you have it.
Since you're going to excuse yourself.
This is the best we got for you, Ben. I'm trying to find the form right now for the next one.
And then Tim will take it from there.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Legal?
Legal notice.
The Enfield Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 24, 2022, 7:00 PM in the Council Chambers Town Hall, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. ZBA 2021 1203, 1375, Enfield Street, appeal of a cease and desist for violation of Section 4.20 of the zoning regulations. Devin Thium, if I'm pronouncing your name, I apologize. Owner, applicant, MAP 18, Lot 243, HR 33 Zone.
For the record, I will be disqualifying myself from sitting in on this hearing. I've previously represented the applicants on many occasions and would have a conflict in voting. We're going to keep Rich Strohny seated as alternate, and Vice Chairman Tim is going to take over as chairman for this meeting.
And Charlie will vote.
And Charlie will be seated as a voting member.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney Carl Landelina, representing the applicant. The applicant actually is Mike.
Mary Ann. Do we have to vote attendance on this, on roll call on this?
We don't have to right now. Excuse us.
Of course.
Do we have to do attendance for this hearing?
Not until after. We don't have to do it yet.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's quite all right. I'm here tonight with Dugan Turhun. He actually occupies the property. The property's owned by his brother, Devin Turhun, and his father. His father's name is?
Theodore Turhun.
Theodore. Dugan is actually the one who occupies the property and engaged in the activity, which we're going to speak about in a few minutes. The house has been in the family for 60 or 70 years.
A long, long time, yeah.
Yeah. So just a housekeeping matter, Mr. Chairman. In accordance with your application guidelines, we were required to put up a sign. There's an affidavit, I think, in the file indicating that Mr. Turhun did pick up signs and had been in place for over a month on his property continuously. And your guidelines also require notice, personal notice to the abutters. I went onto your GIS, and I saw that there were six abutters. So I'm going to, for the record, hand to Mr. Rochelli, six copies of the certified mail receipt. Unfortunately, I only got five back of the green cards. Someone didn't respond, or it's lost in the mail somewhere. But I did, in fact, notify personally all those who were abutters on the property, to the property. So just briefly, obviously, this is not a request for a variance. We don't have to show any hardship. Mr. Rochelli, in doing his job as required under the, his job as enforcement officer, did notify my clients and that they were not allowed to operate a business on the property. I think at the time, or just right before or after, Mr. Turhun had a couple of, probably it was lawnmowers at that time, or maybe snow blowers, out front with a for sale sign. So Mr. Turhun, his hobby is small engine repair. That's what he does, and he loves to do it. That's what he likes to spend his time doing. It's not his means of income. He has other means of income. This is not his livelihood, that he does this as a hobby. Now, if this were occurring inside, he would be able to apply for a home occupation. It doesn't occur inside. Obviously, no one's going to bring a small engine into their house for a lawnmower or a snow blower and repair that inside. The activity, for the most part, goes on in his garage. He's a collector of lawnmowers, snow blowers. He's probably got more snow blowers than anybody I ever talked to. But, you know, people like to collect things, and he tinkers with them. And he'll move parts around. His yard is completely fenced in where the activity takes place. He tells me, and he can tell you himself that this is accurate. Last year, he sold less than 10 lawnmowers and less than 10 snow blowers. And typically, he would drive them to the people who wanted to buy them. It's word of mouth, and he would drop them off at his house. One of the things that Mr. Rochelli and I talked about, one of the concerns, and I shared it as well, was that he's in a residential zone, which is quite clear. And to have, you know, lawnmowers out on your front yard with a for sale sign, I think is a problem. So he doesn't intend to do that anymore. But the question here, I guess, is, you know, the question of accessory uses. When does something turn from an accessory use to something else? Now, you know, certainly we all have the right to tinker with our cars, the snow blowers in our, lawnmowers in our yard. That's accessory to having a residential dwelling. And, you know, I don't know, at some point, if it's not your sole means or means of really making money, when do we, it's a fine line between sort of a hobby that, yes, he sells some snow blowers. When does it change into a business? And I don't think we're there yet. I don't think it's much different than, and I suppose if we looked around, you could find people who build, weld little animals out of shovels and rakes and stuff. My brother happens to do that. And he sells a few a year to people who want it, or wine, things like that. So again, it's not, I wouldn't call that a business. I would call it's a hobby that occasionally you can take some of that to, and you get money for it. So as I said, the place is completely fenced in. It's not, it's not a means of income. I think probably loses money at the end of the day, buying parts and this, and that. And he does have a lot of equipment in his yard. So we can't go to the Planning and Zoning Commission because it's, they don't allow home occupations or home. And again, this is not a business. But even if it was, it's not allowed because it's outside. So there's, seems to me, now, if we went to them and asked them to change the text, I would be concerned if I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I have been on Planning and Zoning Commissions, that that would open the door for people to do it everywhere. By appealing the cease and desist, this is a sort of a one-off. So we're not asking that this be done townwide. If you were to give us permission to do this, you could impose any kinds of conditions that you felt were appropriate. It would not run with the land, like a variance would. It would be personal in nature to the owner of this property. And when the owner ceased to own this property, the nature of this activity that I've described, you would not go beyond that. It wouldn't run to the next property owner. And as, I think it was, Ben went upstairs, I guess. Mr. Winter, who wrote the report, I think, rightly so. I mean, he's leaving it in your hands. This is kind of your interpretation of the regulations. And when does something that might be customary and incidental to the use of a home fall over the line? and incidental to the use of a home fall over the line and become something other than that? You know, he doesn't advertise. He doesn't have signs anywhere. So it seems to me that this is kind of in a gray area. And I think you have the authority to do it. Now, again, as Mr. Winter pointed out to you, you have three options here. One is to deny our request and uphold the cease and desist as written, or to overturn the cease and desist as written, or a third option that you have is to modify it on your own terms, the cease and desist order. The statute provides to give you that opportunity. So I'm not suggesting that you overturn Mr. Rochelli's order in full. Because personally, and I've talked to my client about it, and I think he agrees at this point, that there are some aspects of what he was doing before that could be a nuisance to the neighbors. You know, they drive by. It's like the guy who's always got a car for sale in his front yard, right? You know that guy, you know? So we're not talking about that. So what we're proposing, if you were to want to, and you could, you know, add or delete, that if you were to allow him to go forward, that there'd be no equipment for sale on the front, on the lawn, anywhere. All activity would take place within the fenced areas. And if there were any transactions, the exchange of these goods for some consideration, that they would all take place off-site. He would, once, if he found somebody who wanted a lawnmower, he'd put it in his truck and drive it over to the person's house. And that's where the transaction would take place. That no one would come to his place, his house, and, you know, in any other reasonable conditions that you think are appropriate. Now, I know you have a letter from Catherine Mara, who actually lives in Florida, but owns the medical office next door. So she's a business in that zone. But be that as it may, we also have, I don't know if you want, want staff to read it, or Mr. Chairman, someone up there wants to read it. One of the neighbors, who is directly, I guess, across the street from, has written a letter, Shirley Rinaldi. So if you'd like me to read it or staff.
You can read it in the record. You can read it.
Okay, thank you. To Enfield, it says, yeah, Connecticut Planning Zoning Appeals Commission, January 24, 2021, cease and desist 1375 Enfield Street. My property is across from Martha Parsons' house. With regard to Mr. Turhun's hobby, I have no concerns. In my opinion, he is not impacting the abutting property with noise, signs, or other distractions. There is a large hedge and at least a six-foot fence. The business at 31379, which must be next door, this is not our property, doesn't appear to have any difficulty with 60 to 70-plus cars entering and exiting Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. If this was a blight issue, I would surely be concerned. There are other businesses on Enfield Street within this historic district and aren't touched or recognized. I haven't seen a cease and desist order sent to those properties. Perhaps there should be a follow-up. And if modifications are necessary on how he works at his home hobby, then they can be presented. I would advocate to allow Ms. Dugan Turhun to continue with his hobby. Respectfully submitted, Shirley Rinaldi, 1390 Enfield Street. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anybody have a question?
Do you, do you have an EIN or tax ID or sales and tax ID with the state of Connecticut?
No.
No? Are you, you don't have a registered business with the town either for repair maintenance? Okay. That's it for now.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
How many, whether it's lawnmowers or snow blowers, do you think you fix and sell throughout the course of the year?
Under 10 snow blowers, under 10 lawnmowers are sold during the year.
And you buy these from folks? You pick them up from folks and fix them and you sell them?
I collect them. It's a hobby. I have a garage with some snow blowers that I've had for 35 years. They're enclosed in a garage. They've never bothered anybody for 30 years.
Do you have anyone helping you fix them, or?
No.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Can you, I was reading through the documents and it said that, I think that the zoning enforcement officer wanted to go out to the property and he hasn't been able to come out and survey the area. Is there a reason?
That was at my insistence.
Is there something there?
No, it's, I think Rick even has a picture of, it's some time ago, what was there. But, but, but no, there was no reason.
Because again, I know it's a cease and desist, but normally I would have gone out and taken a look around. But because of that, I didn't do it.
Right.
I understand what you're telling me. And yes, I've seen the lawnmowers or the, or the snow blowers out front. You know, they're kind of there. And I understand that, you know, it's usually the neighbor who will come knocking on your door. That's, you know. But there, it puts us in a bit of a quandary because we're in the same situation as that we're a very narrow board. And as Attorney Landelina has explained, we have like a little bit of wiggle room, but I would need to have some conversation with the planner and the zoning enforcement officer. And I want to ask them a couple of questions.
Sure.
But what about noise and smell? I noticed there's, how deep is your property? I mean, is it, is it short? Because I don't, I think there's another house behind you.
Oh, it goes very, very deep.
Do you, do you go all the way to the highway?
It's all the way back by the little white house on the historical.
I guess what I'm asking is if you had a garage further back on the property or a shed or something.
No, no, there's one garage.
It's just behind the house.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll have some questions to ask of the zoning enforcement officer. Do you want to do it now?
Let me do it now.
Rick, are you going to give a review?
I can.
That would be helpful.
Okay. So if you, if you read the report, you would see that this dates back to 2019, when the first complaints just came in. And so over time, I took pictures throughout the winters and during the summer. And sometimes, as a matter of fact, on weekends, I would drive by. During the week, sometimes there wouldn't be, wouldn't be the lawnmowers or the snow blowers out in front. I'd come by on a weekend when I'm not working and sure enough, there'd be some out there. So there's random times in the past couple of years that machines have been out in front. So it's been a continuous, ongoing issue. And one of the issues that we discussed was it's hard for me to approve something where it changes the character, as it says in the regulations, of the neighborhood. And the constant, there's traffic that goes in and out, people park there, whether it be looking at the lawnmowers or snow blowers for sale. But it's been an ongoing issue over the past couple of years. And ultimately, one day I noticed that there were quite a few more, either snow blowers or lawnmowers, in the backyard. So it came to a point where it just had to, the issuance of a notice of violation had to be sent out because of the continuous activity. So I also have for the ZBA, you can take a look at it. These are some aerial photographs. So those are aerial photographs that have transpired over from 2016 Google Earth through to 2019. And you'll see what amounts to activity on the property. It's not only numerous pieces of lawn equipment, but there's numerous cars that appear to be on the property also. The status of those vehicles, I'm not sure if they're junk vehicles or not, but there's quite a few vehicles back there. And it being just a fence up to hide what's there, we have that problem all the time. It still doesn't dismiss the issue of a violation just because it's being hidden by a fence.
Are you talking about, because I'm looking at this photo, it seems like there's the, I'm going to assume that's the garage with an outbuilding behind it and everything's lined up all nice and straight. Then there's another parcel behind that.
That's their property also, or his property.
Full of cars. Can you see those from the street?
No, you can't see them from the street.
Rick, are there special considerations for historic districts that's relevant to this?
Not really. Basically, it's, it comes to the attention of the people, the residents in that area, more so because it is the historic district, and to us, for that matter. But it's under the, it would strictly be under the regulations itself.
Okay, all right.
The real general complaint did come through a couple of members of the historic commission.
Thank you.
And Rick, can you go back to that? Because it's, I hear you telling me this has been an ongoing discussion with the applicant. Has the applicant been cited in the past?
No, not a discussion with him. And he hasn't, this is the first time he's been cited. It would be random from time to time. When I was working, I would see either a snow blower or lawnmower out there. And then over the past.
Let me use the historic commission because they're pretty sticklers about what happens on Enfield Street.
Right.
So have they ever approached you or filed any notice, like the, we got the two letters? I'm not seeing anything from them, or was it more just in passing?
No, I actually have a.
Read that one.
Written complaint from one of the members from, I believe, this past summer that came in. And they also would just relate it to whoever the liaison was for historic commission that, you know, the Moores were out again, something of that sort, you know?
Rick, the cease and desist has to do with small motor repair, suspected, like, service business?
Well, the business, that type of activity, I mean, if you're doing it on a small scale, I mean, it's kind of subjective as to, you know, what is considered small scale. Repairing engines usually takes place in a business district, whether it be lawnmowers or snow blowers or small engine repair. That's usually a small business. And just because of the amount of activity and the number of pieces of equipment, I find it hard to be able to sign off on a home occupation under the regulations as they exist.
The, and so it has nothing to do with the cars in those Google Earth pictures, then?
I didn't, I didn't realize, I couldn't see the cars. I didn't realize that the cars, all the cars were there until I did the Google Earth. And that was in the past month that I did that. So that issue hasn't been addressed with a violation notice at this time?
So that hasn't, the cars are not part of the issue here?
No, I'm just bringing it to your attention, what's actually on the property.
And just as, also a clarification, the historical district or commission does not have any kind of special regulations that pertain to this?
Not to the violation itself, no, they would not.
Okay.
The violation itself is a zoning issue that you're talking about, not necessarily a historic district.
It's the operation of what I perceive to be the operation of a business that's not allowed in a residential district.
Okay. If I read your report correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong here, you had said that you had, you had pictures going back from 2019 to 2000, late in 2021, all of which showed a combination of equipment, both the lawnmowers and lawn equipment and whatever, usually two or three at a time. You also said that you had spoken to Mr. Thune to respond to this. And if I'm correct, please correct me if I'm wrong here, that he said that he was going to take care of it?
That's, that's correct. And we set up a time when I could go over and look at the property.
Correct.
And then after that, Attorney Landelina got, was contacted by Mr. Turhun. And then I had a conversation with Attorney Landelina. And at that point, it said that I was not allowed to go onto the property.
Okay. I appreciate that the, your client is willing to make some accommodations, I guess would be the word, to deal with this. I kind of wonder what would have happened if this had happened, if we had been talking about this earlier. And the question is, we're here now with a cease and desist order. And.
We're not here for a cease and desist, are we?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the appeal, it's the appeal of my cease and desist order.
Of that cease and desist order.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Carl Landelina. So in all fairness to Mr. Rochelli, he had spoken to my client. I think my client called me after he got the notice of violation. And, and then Rick and I had some conversations and we had talked about, and I looked at the, you know, first we had talked about, I sent my client down with a home occupation application. And I thought that was probably the way to deal with it. And Rick, for the reasons that he's described to you, thought I was going to change the character of the neighborhood and that he couldn't sign off on it. Then I think, I think we had talked later on, and I read the home occupation regulations to essentially to allow for, either from the planning commission or directly through Rick's office, for interior kinds of, you know, the lawyer who lives in a house and the doctor or whatever, it didn't seem to allow for activity outside of the dwelling. So based on those conversations, I think I'd, I'd said to Rick, you know, Rick, why don't you send us a cease and desist and then we'll figure it out from there. And so that's the process that it took. Because I guess I could have appealed his denial of the home occupation and would still be here. But to me, either way, just a matter of process, I thought that this was the better process. We would have been in here in front of you no matter what. So anyway, that's, that's, that's what I recall as being sort of the timeline. So.
Rick, excuse me. Rick, did you, in your conversations going back with the attorney and Mr. Thune, did you tell them that, you know, they, they didn't qualify for a home occupation classification?
Yeah, that's correct. And at Mr. Land, our attorney Landelina's direction, Mr. Turhun did come in with the application. And just because of the amount of activity, I didn't see that I see fit that I should be able to sign off on a home occupation such as it exists right now. The other issue too is, he's, Attorney Landelina is correct in that home occupations are within the home. And in this case, most of the items, the lawn equipment are kept and stored outside. So looking at this also from, trying to be objective, in an industrial or business zone, we allow for 20%, of storage outside. So what I did is I did the area in the backyard as a gauge to determine how much of that property was actually being used. And it's about 46%. So I mean, even if this was in an industrial or business zone, it's above and beyond what would normally be allowed in that type of zone for outside storage. So I know it doesn't, the regulations under residential don't cover outside storage or anything like that. But I'm just trying to do a comparison as to what it would be in a business zone.
Totally understand.
Can you elaborate a little bit about the historic district regulations? Because they're not, I'm sure they have their own.
They do have regulations, although there's, the violation aspects of it are involved and not very to the point where I could hand out a notice of violation for someone, for instance, putting on the wrong siding on their house, something of that sort. So they're a little lacking in any type of enforcement. So the only thing I can really do is to issue something that's in violation of the actual zoning regulations as opposed to any of the historic regulations.
All right, Rick, you also seem to have hung your hat on the idea of changing the character of the neighborhood. character of the neighborhood, the character of the, of the house in a residential neighborhood, if I'm, if I'm correct. And certainly, in my mind, and I rode up and down the street, I went by the house, I didn't go down the property or anything like that, just to see what was there. There were no lawnmowers or anything like that. But looking down the, down the driveway, there looked like there was an awful lot of vehicles and stuff that were just there. A quick drive by. But I didn't see anybody else that had any of these things there. I think it's the frequency, and I think it's the frequency, I think it's the, the number that are sitting out on the front lawn regularly, that is the issue that's at the point at hand here.
During the summer, I mean, I don't have all the pictures, I mean, a lot of them, like I said, when I actually saw, was on weekends, every weekend or every other weekend, there would be a couple of lawnmowers out on the front lawn. During the week, it would be random. And in the wintertime, once in a while during the week, there would be a couple of snowblowers out in front from time to time. The rest of the time during the summer, as I said, there were lawnmowers out there from time to time during the week. But most of the activity, I can say from my own observation, was on weekends. If I happened to drive by, I would see a couple of mowers out there, you know. So it was just more prevalent on weekends. But of course, I'm not out there taking pictures on weekends. Just my own observation.
I'm not questioning what you've seen and stuff like that at all. I just, to me, it's the frequency of it that keeps happening. It's been going on three and a half, maybe four years, that we're aware of.
Mr. Landelina, you made a comment that someone made, or maybe it was in an article in one of the letters, that says there are other businesses on this street, in this area.
Yeah, that was from one of the butters I-
I didn't see any other type of business that more-
I don't know what she was referring to.
Okay.
So that, yeah, that wasn't me.
I thought maybe I missed something.
No.
Question for Rick. Would, would the nature of this change from your perspective if there were no for sale signs when the equipment was out on the front lawn? Would not?
No, whether or not, I mean, if, if that was the case, and they were just sitting out on the front lawn, I'd probably get complaints that the mowers are just sitting on the front lawn.
Understood.
It's just the activity in the, in-
And is it, would it change it from your perspective if it was a certain, under a certain amount that was out during a certain amount of days, like say, two versus three and only on weekends?
I don't, I don't think that that plays any role in this. It's just the activity itself. I can't see myself, just because of what I've seen over the past couple of years, I don't perceive this as, and that's just me, it's just trying to be objective. I don't perceive this as a type of business that can operate out of that, as it is, has been, that can operate out of this residential property.
Can you, can you just, I'm sorry, just to finish up, clarification on activity, what that means for, from your perspective regarding the cease and desist?
Yeah, so that would be the frequency of, of lawnmowers or snowblowers being put out in front. Just driving by and parking, I can, you can see from the roadway, you can see that there's anywheres from five to six snowblowers or lawnmowers that are just sitting in the driveway itself, down at the end in front of the garage. And it's just that the activity is going to continue, and there's no way really for me to keep track of what's going on.
Is part of that activity that you observed, like, public traffic? Like, is it-
There has been, from time to time, there are people that have stopped there and look at the, look at the mowers or look at the snowblowers. I shouldn't say snowblowers, because I haven't seen that off the top of my head that I can remember. But definitely people stopping there, looking at the lawnmowers, or parked in the driveway.
And just for my own educational purpose, to better understand, tag sales, if they were a weekly or every other weekly thing, was that, is that anything relevant to this? And why not?
For one property, tag sales, I believe, are only allowed four times a year.
Okay.
So-
Thank you.
There's a limit on that also.
Thanks a lot, Rick.
But in the end, we would never be even, holding up the cease and desist does not take away his hobby. It would just make him restricted on one, in his garage, that he's playing around with. I mean, we're not, there's nothing here that would stop him from having his hobby. It would just stop him from running, you, you have to admit, this is looking like a business. And I, I live at that end of town, so I, I've been by there many, many times. So, but I don't want it to be implied that we would stop him from wanting to tinker with his lawnmower or snowblower in his garage. He could still do that.
Of course.
He can't, I mean, looking at the photos, there's a lot of lawnmowers in that driveway.
Well, as he testified, he's, he's had, he's got snowblowers that are 35 years old.
And they're in his garage.
Yeah. So, but it would seem to me that the concerns that I'm hearing, for the most part, are the fact that stuff is parked on the lawn with a for sale sign. He's already agreed that, you know, as soon as Mr. Rochelli got in touch with us, my client removed anything, and he hasn't had anything in the front yard since then. And he would be willing to, to have that as a stipulation, should you feel that you agree and you'd like to let him to continue. So-
But let him to continue what?
So he'd be, he'd be tinkering during his hobby, and if someone wanted to buy one of his machines off of him, then he would put it in his truck and deliver it to the person's house, and they would exchange the machine for the, for cash.
But technically, he can do that-
Right.
-with onesie twosies. I want to be clear, I'm trying to understand, are you telling me that he could have 12 lawnmowers, or, you know, my husband breaks his John Deere, and I need to get it fixed, and, you know, he's going to fix it for me? I mean, it could, is it looking like a business, or is it looking like a hobby?
Well, see, I, I think, one of the things that, that Rick hasn't cited us for is for, we're getting into the question of how many, and then we start talking about junkyard. And that's old and discarded items that have no use, that can't be repurposed. That's not what's going on here. And I think Mr. Rochelli understands that, otherwise he probably would have cited us for having a junkyard.
Well, if he had gone out to look, you're not sure what he would have said.
Well, he's got, he's got his picture.
I think one of the other concerns, just based on the statute here, is it does talk about minimal customers may visit the business on a regular basis. Whether you call it a business or a hobby, I think one of the concerns is there's traffic coming through in this area. Number one, it's Enfield Street, so it's a busy street to begin with. But defining minimal, you know, that, that's the concern. And as, as we have these numbers of either snowblowers or lawnmowers in play, I think that's one of the concerns that we have to look at as well. Right? The flow through traffic to the, to the, to the home.
So last year, the traffic would have been, I mean, I don't know how people visit and didn't buy anything, but he sold less than 20 machines. That's two, less than two cars a month coming into his yard. That seems to be minimal to me. I mean, I know-
Minimal customers, not every customer will buy. So you can't say it's a one for one there with 20 units-
Perhaps.
Only 20 customers.
Yeah.
You know, I hope, I certainly hope the quality of his work is that good, that every time someone shows up, buys it or purchases it from him. But again, the concern is the traffic. And what's happening at this location makes it look like that business. Right? And again, I have to agree with, with Commissioner Turner, we, we don't want to stop him from his hobby. I wish I had the skills he had with fixing these types of machines. The concern is more, what's, what's happening in this location is making it look more like a business than just that hobby. And that, I think that's the basis of the, the cease and desist here with the volume.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Rochelli and the planner.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so just so you understand too, under the, the home occupation, if you look at that section of the regulations, there's a number of them applied that apply. One of one, I, subsection I, such use shall be limited to the primary building on the lot, except as may be allowed under the provisions of subsection J below. J below is pet grooming. So those don't apply. But it limits it to the building itself, the home occupation. And that, a lot of the equipment and everything is kept outside. So that's another-
Could the building not be his living room, but it could be the garage?
Could be the garage itself.
Right. Keeping the doors closed, more or less, you know what I mean? I don't want you to asphyxiate it, but in the garage.
Well, it says primary building there.
Okay.
So, and that might be an issue too.
Wait, the chair, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
So, so we also allow yard maintenance services. And even there, all storage and maintenance of tools and equipment must be inside the dwelling or inside an accessory structure. So once again, that's not occurring here. I understand Attorney Landelina's point of, you know, people could have a hobby, but this is, you know, we haven't been able to go back there and look. We don't know if these are in disrepair or, or even can be turned into something that's, that's work, that can work. But, you know, small engine repair and automotive maintenance is not permitted as a business in any, any residential property. That's what I see this as.
So, Mr. Chairman, it seems like we're stuck on whether, we haven't defined yet or come to a conclusion, doesn't seem like that this is an occupant, occupancy, or not occupancy, a home, right, occupation.
Home occupation.
Right, auxiliary occupation. So with that, Attorney Landelina, your client, what does your client do for occupation, for main occupation, for earning a living, if you don't mind me asking?
He can answer that if he wants. I know this is not his source of income, I can tell you that.
If you don't mind, it just seems like the sticking point is, is this your living, fixing the report?
Not at all, it's a hobby.
And then if, if you're not, if you're comfortable, like, generally what you do for a living, if you don't mind sharing?
I'm not currently working.
Okay.
We're going outside of our lane.
No, I'm just trying to establish whether this is an, it seems more legitimate that this would be an occupation if there was no other occupation. That's all I'm, I'm trying to get at.
Yep.
Whether it's a hobby or not, selling 20 units a year, pull this down to your hand, saying 20, 20 units a year doesn't mean that there weren't 40 units for sale, okay, which gets into a higher quantity. In my mind, I just can't get rid of the business idea, whether you're making a profit on it or not. You're running through that many pieces of equipment. It's hard to me to just say that it's not a business. And if it's a business, particularly based on the things that we just said here in terms of the home occupation criteria, it just doesn't meet it. It's, it's not in the home. Pardon?
That's, that's, I know, excuse me, we have to finish the public hearing before we get into discussion.
No problem.
I understand the concerns you've raised. That's why I didn't take an appeal when Rick denied our application for a home occupation. This doesn't fit within the parameters of that. So it seems to me that the best course of action for my client is to convince you that I really believe this is not a business. It's a hobby where occasionally, you know, there's some sales going on. And I'm sure it's a kind of activity that takes place in this day and age, all over town, you know. But the, the main concern is the equipment on the lawn. That's not an issue anymore. He's not going to do that. And, but, you know, I can't tell you that, what you should be thinking about, whether this is a business or not. I don't think it is. I think it's still within the, the very narrow lane of being a permitted accessory use to living in a residential zone. But that's for you to decide. That's why you get paid the big bucks. But, you know, all I can tell you is the facts, as I understand them. And, you know, it doesn't have the earmarks of a business. There's no advertising, you know. There wouldn't be any equipment or signs on the property, that kind of thing, you know. So, but, you know, obviously, that's, that's in your wheelhouse, not mine.
Okay.
I know there's some other folks who came to speak, so if you have any other questions for us.
Let me just ask, does the commissioner have any other questions for the applicant?
I have a question for Rick. I know that the state sets limits on how much of something you could sell before they consider it a business. My question here is on your cease and desist. Is the cease and desist for not putting stuff on the lawn, or is it a cease and desist for him not having a business at his house?
It's the business itself. Operating the business in a residential zone.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments from the members? Move on to audience, please.
What you do now is you open it for, for the public.
Thank you very much. We'll open it up for the public to come up with any comments pro or con. I'd ask you just to come up one at a time, please. And I give you a name and address. Direct your, your comments to the chair, please.
Can I take this off to talk? Hi, my name's Rebecca Vick. I live at 1371 Enfield Street. So I am Mr. Terhune's direct neighbor. I'm on the corner of Post Office Road and in the historic district. Just in response, I don't know, tell me if I'm commenting on this wrong, but in response to some of the things I heard earlier, I just want to clarify, there is a, there is a business directly next door to him. There's a podiatrist office next door to him, which does have about 50 cars a day coming in and out of there. So as far as traffic goes, one or two people stopping to look at his lawnmower has never been an issue. But with me taking a toddler up and down the street all the time, I can tell you the, I'm not here to complain about the podiatrist office. I'm just saying that this is a main road that already has a business next door. I promise you, anyone coming to look at his lawnmowers is not adding to the traffic of Route 5. The other thing I want to add is, we talked about the character of the neighborhood, being a historic district, being residential, et cetera. I can't see how the activity going on at Mr. Terhune's property takes away from the character. The house is perfectly maintained. He has a gardener who comes in the summer and trims the roses. He had his siding repainted this summer, the shutter is redone. Like, the house is very well maintained. My kid has gone over and sat on his lawnmowers in the backyard for fun. This is not, this is not, you know, boarded up and not residential in any way. He came and shoveled my sidewalk for me when I was in the hospital delivering my son. Very much neighbors and not a business next door. And as far as, you know, what can be sold on any given property, while from the look of me, you can probably tell I don't repair lawnmowers, my engineering husband does tinker in the garage and has sold things on Craigslist now and then. My neighbor on Post Office Road has a sign out in front of his house almost daily, saying that he sells little kids' bicycles. And I don't see that being sanctioned. So I don't see how, what's going on on Mr. Terhune's property is any different than what's going on in all of my surrounding properties. What was I going to say? But mainly the reason I came, so those were just comments to what I had heard said. But mainly the reason I came here tonight is because I've lived in this property for five years now. I moved in in 2017 with my husband. And it wasn't, wasn't until I got a letter in the mail that I was aware that a so-called business was being operated next door. Am I aware, no offense, Dugan, that there's a bit of a clutter next door? Yes. But only from the view of my second story of my house, not from the road, not from even walking around between our front yards with my kid. And as far as I'm aware, this isn't being sanctioned for clutter. Like we said earlier, there's no issue with it, with there being a junkyard, right? This is about whether or not he's running a business. And the only people I've really seen in my, in the driveway next to me for the last five years are his friends who are sitting here, save for a couple of cars, like we said, maybe looking at a lawnmower in the summer. There's probably just as many cars in my own driveway with my parents stopping over and my friends coming over. I don't think there's very much going on there. And as far as what's going on in his garage, I can tell you that my husband keeps our garage a lot messier. So, all this to be said, I, I'm not at all challenging that he fixes lawnmowers or that occasionally people have come by. But this is completely within the norm as his direct next door neighbor, and in fact, his only direct next door neighbor who's not a business itself, that this is nothing out of the ordinary from anything else happening on every other property on Enfield Street.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Anybody else?
My name's Israel Mercado. I know Dugan-
Name and address.
For the past 12 years.
Excuse me, sir, can I please have your name and address, please?
Israel Mercado.
Your address.
Five and a half Bridge Lane. He's my neighbor. Five and a half Bridge Lane, he's my neighbor.
Okay.
Pretty much.
Thank you, sir.
I met his father about 12 years ago, and he gave me his number because he got roses in his driveway, all the way down to, to the garage, and he wanted to keep those roses looking like, you know, when his mother, I think passed like 14 or 15 years, I'm not sure, but he said he wanted to keep all those roses as best as he can. So, I've been helping him for the past 12 years, sometimes one die, I planted another one. And I think he's tried to improve, you know, the property to look better because he even asked me, do you know how to put, you know, grassy? And, and I can help you out with this. And in fact, well, he's, he's a good human being. I got a lot of respect for him, and he, I've been there, and he give his stuff away to people, they come, they need a tire, and they, he just, he just give it away. He haven't give it to me also. And I, because I, I do a little work, and he want to keep those flowers, I take care of those flower, those roses, at least three times a year, I fertilizer, I, I plumbing and everything. And I, I don't think he's really running a business. I think he's a good human being, and he got, yeah, he got some lawnmower, it's not, he can't hide that. The guy, he, a lot of stuff, he give it away to people. I think, leave it alone.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak for or against the appeal? Anybody else wanting to speak? Come forward. A third time, anybody else? Close the hearing, the audience participation of it?
I do, yes.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, before you close the hearing, perhaps you might want to hear from the applicant again. Before you close the hearing, you should perhaps see, let the applicant speak again.
We will certainly let that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, again, for the record, Carl Landelina. So, I understand, you know, this is an unusual set of circumstances here that you're, you're being presented with. So, I, I would offer this up to you, that I guess perhaps you don't have eyes on that you otherwise might have, and I'll take that responsibility on myself. There were reasons why, and I don't think I need to go into, into them with you, but if you wanted to continue this matter to next month, and we would allow Mr. Rochelli to go over there and take a look around, with, with the idea that perhaps if you were inclined to take the middle road, which is to modify the cease and desist, that, and you wanted someone on, I said that side of the table to have eyes on, then, and you want to speak to Mr. Rochelli or any of you wanted to go by, you know, you can't, more than two of you can't go at any time, and then, because it's a meeting, you can arrange through Mr. Rochelli to do that and take a look, and if you felt that, based upon what you saw, there were some conditions that you could put on, again, this is not, this is not going to run with the land, this is personal to the property owner, that may satisfy you, then, then if you want that opportunity, we're offering it to you. If you feel you don't need that, you want to close, that's, that's entirely up to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Do you guys have anything? No?
Not at this time.
Okay, yes. No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, closed hearing. Okay, before we move to motions, we're going to go to discussion.
Do you have to make a motion to close this?
Yes, we have to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Just, if, if you want to continue it, you don't want to, I, I just want to make sure you understand, if you close the hearing, you can't continue it. You could continue, you could table your action, but you can hear no more information. So, just.
Okay, so if we wanted to, okay, okay, so, hold on, hold on one second. So, we could have some discussion right now without closing, closing the public hearing.
That's what.
Okay, okay.
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion to close the public hearing at this point.
I withdraw my second.
So, kicking it around, we do have the opt, we have three resolution types, okay? And one now, actually technically, one puts a, not a resolution, but an opportunity on the floor, which we have to decide if we want to take advantage of. So, Attorney Landelina is saying, you know, maybe we'll have our CEO go out and take a look see. Personally, I think that we should be open to any more information and let him go look, and we table this till next month.
I agree, Commissioner Turner, in fact, was saying earlier was I think that if.
You're due dead.
I'll get used to it one of these days, I apologize. What I was trying to.
You're going to get used to it.
Okay. What I was trying to say earlier is that if, if Rick had been able to go out and not, deny that opportunity, I don't think we'd be here, or we'd be here maybe under different circumstances. So, and I think we're certainly trying to follow the rules here and try to, you know, enforce the rules here, but we're also trying to, to work with the citizens here. I, I'd like another, another shot at it, I'd like to hear what he has to say, if, if he thinks that's a good idea as well.
Okay, so why don't we just make a motion to table?
A motion that we table this current meeting, this, where are we here? ZBA 2021-1203, given Mr. Land, or Attorney Landelina's offer to, to allow us to go out there and, and have a look until next month.
You need a second? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Do we have to do a roll call after the table?
Do you want a roll call? No.
All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed?
So, we'll see you in a month.
Thank you.
Do we need a reminder about?
Everybody make sure that you keep your paperwork.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
We're just, we're just going to take it off the table and we can be in the hearing.
We'll just reopen it like we did the last one.
It's going to be February 21st, right?
I have more than one.
We're on to approval of minutes. The December 27, 2021 meeting minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
I second.
I'd like some discussion on it, though.
Sure.
To the planner's office, these minutes are very limited than of what happened in the meeting. I'm not saying they're not, they're, they're, they kind of give the theme. Could you run out and tell them they left their coat? Tell Rick. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we need a moment.
Okay, I think we can.
Anyway, I just think the meeting, the meeting minutes are a little lean of them.
I'll say, I watched the video since I missed the meeting, and I have to agree that there's probably some content that needs to be rebuilt back in. And again, I, I was absent, so I'm basing on what I saw on the, the video that I watched, but there's probably some good content that needs to be collected or acknowledged in there as well.
I would like to table the minutes until they can be maybe revised. Beefed up here.
So, do you want to rescind that motion to accept?
Well, we're not going to vote out of.
Well, we basically just made the motion and seconded it, we can pull back the motion.
Yeah, we can withdraw it. Do we have, do we have a motion to table?
I make a motion to table. I withdraw my second of my original second.
We'll get the routine down.
Do we have a vote?
All those in, do you want to, just raise your hand?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just do that. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Just for verification, you're making a motion to table the minutes?
Right, because I'd like them to come back a little more.
Beefier?
A little, a little less thin.
All right.
Yeah, there's stuff that.
I mean, I think we know it's not a verbatim transcript, and we're, I don't think Commissioner Turner's suggesting that, but just make sure that everything that was discussed is captured.
Thank you.
And who made the motion?
Charlie.
Charlie, and seconded by, okay, thank you. Just like to make, we get this stuff to the staff and they post it tomorrow in the morning, so, thank you.
Do we have any correspondence or staff reports? Nope, nothing. Any other business?
I'd like to talk about the case seven.
Okay, sounds like other business.
I left you a copy on your desk, and I gave one to everyone who was, the, I sent Senator Kissel a, some, a document regarding the case seven, and since our town attorney, Mr. Talberg, was clear in his last document to us on December 23rd, in his first paragraph, it said, "The remedy to this void is legislative action." So, I am not speaking for the board, I wrote this as me, I'm sharing it with you. If any of you want to write more, you're more than welcome to Senator, send it to Senator Kissel, or to any of the state reps, but it's bill time, and they have to have the stuff in front of them right away so that they can send it through their process. I'm hoping that it will make it at least out of committee, or at least get to committee so they'll, you know, talk about it. And if we have the opportunity, I would strongly advise us, you know, if there's any type of public hearing, that we participate. This case seven process has to change, and it's diff, it's not just our town, I talked to lots of other towns, who is ZBA people, who say the exact same thing, and every one of them seems to do it different, and not necessarily accurately. So, I, Lori, did I give you, you have a copy of this?
I don't believe.
I don't believe so.
I, could you give this to them for the record? But please understand, that was written by me, not you, and I didn't ask for you to sign on. If you want to write anything, you're on your own. The case seven from the previous meeting is still sitting, and I would like clarification, and I'm not sure, Lori, if I can ask you this question, because that, that is a closed, that was never a public hearing, and it's technically over, right? So, can I ask you a question about case seven in general? Not necessarily this, this past one. I don't know what the rules are.
I can't guarantee a logical answer.
Okay, but I think you've already given it to me, because it was slightly in the minutes, and it was also in our dialogue. I got the call from the office to come in to sign the case seven. I have not signed it. There was a couple of things that Rick and I were yakking about, so we're still waiting for that to resolve.
Okay.
But in that discussion, I also remember you saying, and me reading in the minutes and watching it, where you said that if they go, when they go to planning and zoning, then the case seven would be signed, versus me signing the case seven now, them not going to planning and zoning. So, which is my answer? Hold until they get on the docket with P and Z?
I believe that that's what our conversation was, was that we should not.
Right, hold until they get to P and Z.
Sign it until P and Z has approved it, in case they have to go back to P and Z, so.
Correct, because they have not even, and I won't speak for the zoning enforcement officer, but they have not responded.
Yeah.
Nor are they on the docket with planning and zoning. So, this case seven is going to sit.
Okay. The, the other thing that I also brought up is the fact that the form actually asked for the zoning official to sign it, and not a member of the ZBA, so.
Well.
That could just take anything out of your hands.
It could, but right now, we want to make sure, there's a couple of things that Rick and I talked about that need to be looked at, on the, the second form that's now in process of holding.
So, to be clear, a week ago, this past Friday, I sent him an email advising him that he needed to add additional information to the case seven, to be clear. The unit is just seven, that was on there, but the actual business name as signage would attest is not the name that's on the case seven.
Right.
And I'll follow up again tomorrow, I guess.
But he, but now that she's, we're in this discussion, even when he gives you that correction, this case seven sits until he's on the docket of planning and zoning.
Technically, the cease and desist is in effect until the situation is remedied, and it hasn't, it won't be remedied until he gets a final approval.
Right.
So, that's kind of where it stands at this point.
Okay, so, I think we just keep moving forward, and let's hope that the legislature will help us get this clarified. If it stays with ZBA, fine, just give us our homework. If it leaves ZBA, we will not feel bad. My personal opinion.
And just to reiterate, both Connecticut, Connecticut Association of Zoning Enforcement Officials, CASIO, and the Connecticut Association of Planning, the American Planning Association, have both been fighting to get this out of, out of the zoning board of appeals hands for years. So, hopefully, maybe this will be the year. I guess they're still going to fight for it.
Well, maybe it's this, this board that's going to make the world turn.
There you go.
I'd also.
Did you get any response from Senator Kissel's office?
Yes, they're already looked, their lawyers are already reviewing it, and they're in the process of putting in bill form, so, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, just, I want to officially thank Commissioner Turner for taking the initiative to go to the legislative, legislative route to remedy this situation, so I just want to publicly thank her for that initiative and proactive action.
Thank you. I'd also like us to ask Chairman LaRosa to come back next month. I will be honest, I think he's been a great chairman for the 12 years he was on the zoning board of appeals. I'm sad that he had lost his commission, but that's what happens at elections, we all know how that plays. I just think that he definitely gave us many years of good leadership, and he was very well informed on the zoning rules, and he worked well with the team, and I believe he worked well with the staff, and I would like to be able to have him come back and us to formally thank him, maybe with a small token of our appreciation, but I don't think that any of us should just be cast aside just because things changed slightly. I know that Mo is, he wanted to come back, even if he wasn't going to come back as chairman, he wanted to come back as a member. So, I would like us to put out a request to have him see us, and then we all put our heads together on what we could do to thank him.
What would be, I agree, and how would the mechanism for, individually, we reach out to him, or through?
I could just send him a, a note, and then we would collectively do something, this is not from the office, it's us.
Yep.
Okay?
If, if you want to do something during the meeting, if you could let us know beforehand so we could add it to the agenda.
Sure, let me find out if he's willing to come by.
Okay, and, or if you, you know, if you do it beforehand, a special meeting or something, we could do that, or whatever, just let us know one way or the other.
Yep.
But it's a nice thought.
Hand your case seven stuff, people.
One other question, thank you for getting us the bylaws. My understanding is we should be discussing them at some point?
We, we should discuss them probably at the next meeting. I've, I've noticed a couple of things in there that are, you know, one thing it says that you meet on the last Monday of the month, and we've been setting the meetings at the fourth Monday of the month.
I thought I'd use the current ones, because the bylaws that I had said the fourth Monday.
So is the next meeting the 21st or the 28th?
It's always the fourth Thursday.
28th.
The fourth Monday.
Whose?
I know that I have them, Lori, so when I get to the, when I get home, I'll send them to you.
Or is this going to mine? Oh, it's yours?
That's great. You know, I don't know whether they ended up in Raquel's or Jen's folders, but they're not in our ZB A folder.
Well, it was, we worked with them. I believe it was Jen, we, we went through them.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time on this.
Good.
And I want to say...
That'd be great. So then, yeah, the ones we handed out were from 2013, which was the last ones we could find. And we searched every file we had digitally.
Yeah, same, same here.
All right, I'll send her, I'll send her a copy.
The ones you put in the binder are 2013?
They're probably in our, if you have the email, they're the same.
The last ones I read.
I'm sure it's in the record.
Can you get those out to us earlier, you know, sooner rather than later?
Of course.
Just so we could have them for the next meeting?
How about the minute I get home?
Well, not, yeah, I'm just talking about getting them out to all of us.
Yeah, I'll send them to you.
Oh, yeah, we got the list.
I've got you on my email.
I didn't get that last email.
I did, I guess I didn't put you on. I thought I did. I know I did. I just don't know where you went. Okay, do we have anything else?
Any other business, or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second a motion.
We're adjourned.
Who made that motion?